Like to call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Ryan?
Here.
San Filippo?
Here.
McCarty?
Here.
Kirstensen?
Here.
Madigan? Gary, can you hear us? Gary, can you hear us? Okay, Turner?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Okay, now we move on to announcements and correspondence.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I just wanted to let advise the planning commission that at the last village board meeting, the proposed variance for the proposed building on Anita was actually approved by the board. So that you recall the request a twelve foot variance for that proposed building over at what was previously known as the Circuit Factory over on Anita that was approved by the village board. And then also the ComEd Tower, you request there was a variance for a proposed one hundred and four foot tower as part of the ComEd's new smart energy system. And that was also approved by the village board. So both ordinances were approved by the board. And with that, I'll conclude my update to the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Now we have approval of the November first, twenty twenty-three Planning and Zoning Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Mr. Ryan?
Upstate.
San Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Madigan?
She's on, but I don't know if she can speak.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Yeah.
Henning, yes.
You can hear us, Sherry?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
How do we, did she?
Did you hear the motion for the minutes, Sherry?
Sherry, can you hear us?
I can't hear you, but I have closed caps on.
Okay.
She said you can't hear us.
Okay, so the motion? Motion carried? Okay, so the motion carried. Okay, at this time. Are we okay here? We're gonna take a minute to try to figure this out.
Hello?
Yep. Lori, I think we need to move on. Sherry, I'm sorry at this point, but we're gonna move on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, she can, yeah, okay. So now we are coming to
Old Business.
We're coming to public comments on the agenda. Does anyone have any public comment? Okay, so then we'll move to Old Business, PZB twenty-three dash eighteen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Pursuant to the applicant, I did, Madam Chairperson, I did forward you a letter from the applicant, the solar farm applicant. As you know, this was continued, they did request a continuance again. They had a meeting with the neighbors last week. And then based on that discussion, based on some expressed concerns of neighbors, they have requested continuance to our next scheduled meeting to try to work through some of the issues that the neighbors expressed at that meeting they had at the Antioch Library last week. So pursuant to that letter pursuant to their request, I'm requesting a motion to continue this public hearing to our next planning commission meeting in January.
Okay, so I would like a motion, please.
Well, make a motion to continue PZB twenty-three dash eighteen for the consideration of the special use variance in site plan for the solar farm to be located at the property commonly known as six fifty East North Avenue in zero two dash zero three, three hundred dash zero two seven.
I'll second it, but then I have some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. McCarty.
Mr. Garrigan, they're holding meetings with the public, is that the meeting that you're talking about with their neighbors?
Yes, yes, they had a private meeting with the residents. As you know, they have obviously an applicant also has a prerogative to meet with any neighbor or whatever to try to address their concerns. So I, there was a meeting, of course, staff did not attend that meeting. But it's my understanding there was a meeting last week with with some of the adjacent residents.
Will we be able to request what information or what objections they may have had?
Obviously, at the public hearing, you have every right to basically hear the expressed concerns of the residents. As you know, notice went out to other residents within two hundred and fifty feet. You'll have the prerogative to ask the applicant any questions that you have. You'll have, you will even have the prerogative to to ask the applicant, you know, the nature of that, those discussions. I don't believe there was a recording of that. You know, it's not, it's not under extract per view of this planning commission. It was a private meeting between the applicant and residents. But you have, obviously, you had the prerogative to answer any question.
I just, I just haven't had that happen in the past.
You've never had?
Never had an applicant go out to the public and request more information from public without, especially when we're in the middle of a continuance of a hearing and then continuing on with them coming for us. It's a public hearing and you can hear all of it.
My twenty-four years of experience, it's not unusual for a large country. You know, be frank, this is potentially a controversial case. Potentially a controversial case, it's not unusual for a developer to meet with a residence to try to address their concerns. That's, it's very typical, at least my twenty-four years of experience.
We've never had it happen before, but that's fine.
All right. Okay, so we have a second roll call.
Ryan?
Yes.
San Filippo?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Kirstensen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes. All right, we move on to New Business, PZB twenty-three dash twenty. Consideration of a special use for an electronic message board to be located at the property commonly known as the Antioch Community High School located at eleven thirty-three Main Street, pin number zero two dash seventeen dash two hundred dash zero zero two.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Let the record reflect this is a public hearing being heard pursuant to public notice and according to all states' statutes of applicable ordinances. Madam Chairperson, this matter comes before you this evening from the Antioch Community High School, requesting a special use in a variance, property is commonly known as one one three three Main Street. The applicant, as you will know, for many years has had an electronic message board on their existing monument sign in front of the Antioch Community High School for, you know, for many years. Last year, the applicants informed staff that they were in the process of updating their sign. Or, and therefore, they were working with staff and they requested, they advised staff that they were gonna simply replace the existing previous EMV sign. Based on a number of factors, which I'll go through, is it'll be required based on the fact that they will be required to have a special use because this is a new EMV sign. And their request to have a variance, I'll go through the basis, the factual basis for the requested variance. So as you well know, all EMV signs in the village require a special use. So based on the fact this is a new EMV sign, they are required to have a special use approval. In addition, they're asking for a variance. The basis for the variance is currently the new EMV assigned that was actually installed on the monument sign. It's actually forty square feet, which is approximately over twenty-five percent of the overall monument signage. And therefore, they need relief. And also, as I'll explain a little later in my staff report, they're looking for some variation from our current language in our, our EMV sign ordinance. As you know, we updated the village's sign ordinance, I think, four years ago. And we made some modifications to their sign ordinance. So whenever we're looking at the property, it's always important to look at the context. So it's important to look at the actual context of the property. So we, this area is a mixed use, there's residential to the north, we have commercial to the south. We have across the street, there's commercial. So it's important whenever looking at special use to basically look at adjacent contiguous uses. So the first aspect for a special use is will a special use will not be injurious use of employment enjoyment of the property in the immediate area for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish property values. With respect to this variance, the proposed variance, no basis to say this proposed variance will have any type of negative impact on the actual adjacent properties, specifically the commercial properties. As you well know, this property, the south is commercial, property to the west is commercial. This proposed EMV sign will have no negative impacts based on the current regulations of our EMV regulations. There's no basis to indicate that if in fact the applicant complies with the current language in our EMV ordinance, there would be any negative or type of diminishing of property values of the adjacent properties. If in fact, if they comply with the village's strict ordinance language in our sign ordinance. With respect to the second finding of fact, this establishment of special use will not be injurious to the normal and orderly development and improvement of adjacent properties for uses permitted in the subject zoning district. Again, based on the proposed signed ordinance, if in fact the applicant complies with our language, specific language, there's no basis to indicate that there will be any negative impact on the commercial properties to the south and west. As it relates to the properties in the residential area to the north, if in fact the applicant complies with the current language, which I'll highlight of our current ordinance, there's no indication that there will be any negative impact on the residences to the north. As you well know, our current language in our ordinance restricts that all lettering would be either black, I'm striking that, either white or black, white or red on a black background that is consistent with what other applicants have done or been approved for in our downtown area, specifically the United Methodist Church. If in fact the applicant complies with that language, there's nothing to specifically indicate that this proposed ordinance will have negative impact on, on the properties, adjacent properties. For the basis of variance, the applicant is specifically asking for relief from our strict language to actually incorporate a more extensive, intense signage on their proposed EMV sign and are asking for relief from the village's strict language, i.e. regulating that all lettering be limited to either white or red on a black background. In addition, we prohibit moving graphics and any type of moving graphics, no colored pictures shall be allowed on a sign. That specifically is prohibited in accordance with our sign ordinance. What the high school is seeking is some variation or relief from that strict section of our EMV regulations. So the variance itself is, that's the basis, the first aspect of the variance. The second aspect of the variance is, as I've already highlighted, they're asking for relief from our twenty-five percent limitation of that EMV signs could be no greater than twenty-five percent of a monument signs overall total square footage. They're asking for relief of that section, so they're asking for two variances this evening. So I'm gonna go through specifically each finding of fact that's required for a variance. The first aspect is the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, allowing an EMV sign with the moving graphics or colored pictures as potentially requested by the applicant could potentially have a negative impact on the adjacent residents to the north. Staff does have concern that if a large colored pictures, moving graphics, video would be displayed on this proposed EMV sign, it potentially would not be consistent with the character of Main Street or the historical character of Main Street specifically. As you well know, we've had extensive discussions about EMV signs. The board had a very healthy discussion when they approved this ordinance and they felt very strongly that all EMV regulations should be have, should be limited as it relates to color on the black background and that video or vibrant colored graphics should be prohibited on Main Street. That, that's, and that's consistent with the ordinance as drafted. There are specifically one sign on one seventy-three that this village board felt very strongly about and that ordinance was generally drafted to prohibit that type of sign in the future. So staff again has made extensive concerns about allowing moving graphics or any colored pictures on this EMV sign in the future. So we believe the applicant has not demonstrated or complied with the first required findings of fact. The second finding is the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances and thus strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance which result in practical difficulties and impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions that are generally found on other properties in the same zoning areas. There is nothing inherent unique about this applicant. There's nothing based on this fact that would justify a variance that would constitute a hardship. There's no unique hardship in this case. Clearly, the applicant can have the EMV sign if the special use is approved. What they are asking for is relief to have more profound graphics or more profound pictures on their, or on their proposed EMV sign. Again, consistently what staffs articulated, we have concerns about the potential impact on the neighbors to the north if the relief is granted as it relates to more defined graphics or moving graphics on this EMV sign. The third finding of fact for a variance, the property cannot yield a reasonable use if permitted only under conditional allowed under zoning ordinance. Again, this proposed variance has no impact on the use. There's nothing reflected, obviously, if this variance would be recommended for denial, that the high school could not continue operations, nor is there any basis to say the applicant could could not continue to use the EMV sign consistent with what they did for many, many years. So we do not believe that there's a basis for this third finding of fact. The fourth finding, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. It would not be substantial detriment to the property. Again, consistently what we said, this proposed EMV signs approximately two hundred and twelve feet from the nearest residence. Residents have already expressed concerns, the staff, and based on this concern, based on the potential negative impact on these residents to the north, they have every right to have what we call quiet enjoyment of the properties. Based on this, staff will be, continues to be concerned about the potential negative impact along a variance or along relief from the strict language of the village's EMV regulations. Now, with respect to the unique nature of this, obviously, this is a major civic use, the high school. Staff is very sensitive to that fact, staff is very supportive of the special use. We believe the applicant's request for an EMV sign is completely appropriate, especially based on the past, past history. We also think there are perhaps unique circumstances that would justify some relief from our ordinance. But generally, we would request that the applicants propose any type of extensive signage which is seeking relief from our strict language, be limited to certain defined periods of times, certain hours, if there is any support for this. So staff is recommending approval of the special use this evening with the highlight stipulations. And we are also recommending denial of the requested variance. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
Yes. Questions?
Do you have any questions?
Sure. The, and again, the use of graphics, you know, I agree that at times it's good for them to be able to do that at the, at the high school on special occasions. But are we gonna define special occasions and more as something better than just special occasions?
That would be required, any type of, if there is any support for that relief, any support, again, for the record, staff has recommended denial of the variance. But if in fact those special, those specific times could be incorporated in the special use of the EMV sign, if there's any support for that. So if there's any support for any type of relief from the village's strict language as it relates to the actual signage, i.e. allowing more color, allowing more graphics, it would have to be defined within the special use.
Okay.
So I think staff is trying to be sensitive to the unique nature of the high school. They're trying to be sensitive to their unique role in the community. We're trying to be sensitive that, that they're trying to communicate, that communications to the general public is critically important for their mission. So staff is, we recognize all those factors. We also are very sensitive and concerned about the residents to the north.
Yeah, I agree, so, but I was just thinking that if we did allow some type like that, that we would have to create some type of guidelines or be specific on what we would consider to be in that variance.
I mean, that's why it's scheduled for the planning commission, this evening, to have those general discussions. If there would be a defined period of time, obviously, I think the applicant, it'd be important to hear from the applicant and see what their perspective is and whether it'd be even amenable to how allowing some type of defined time period or some type of, you know, define those appropriate circumstances. I mean, obviously, you know, during commencement, there may be appropriate times, homecoming that may be appropriate to have some type of relief. But that's something that would have to be negotiated, incorporated into a special use.
Okay.
So I think there, what I'm saying, long and short, I think there's a ways to try to, to try to accomplish what the high school's doing, but not to just provide them with a variance from the village's ordinance.
Yeah, I agree, I think there are some, maybe, you know, we'll come to some agreement on, on those things like that. I just want to make sure that if we do agree to something like that, that we make those terms very specific that, on how, how that, how in the time duration and how many occasions that's gonna happen in a year. Those type of things like that could be well defined. Okay, nothing else.
Okay. The San Filippo?
Do we know what hours they were running the sign before on the previous?
I don't, I think there's more appropriate representatives here, I believe.
Okay. So we don't have, there's, the applicant isn't present here.
I believe the applicant.
Okay.
Yes, we're.
Sure.
Okay.
Definition of what was there before.
Yeah, that was great.
Specifically what the high school is seeking. Variance itself on its face was asking for relief from the village's sign ordinance, but, so with that, I'm gonna probably turn over to.
If you'd like to come up and be sworn in, state your name and.
I'm Ryan Miles.
Do soundless for testimony of giving this hearing is special to the best of your knowledge.
Yes. Just to answer your question, the, the old sign was a yellow bulb type of analog sign and it ran twenty-four seven. Didn't have a timer per se.
And so, but it wasn't showing any kind of graphics or anything like that, that I recall, right?
Correct, it was
Okay.
letters and numbers, temperature.
Right.
I'm a day.
Okay. Because I'm gonna be honest, I mean, I noticed when they put the new one in and when we had the big flashy and I was like, wow. I mean, and I have kids who go to the high school, there's a lot of traffic, it's a disaster, you know, coming in and out of school. So I, besides the residents that live directly across the street that I have concern about, you know, I, I wonder if that would be distracting to the.
We are, we are fully prepared to do a timing system with it. Should we go further from white lettering, red lettering? It is a bright.
Right.
It is a very bright.
Oh, I noticed it, yeah, right away. And so, how often would they, and like, would it just be in certain specific like graduation or what are we talking about?
We, we use a product called Rise Vision. And so it has suggestive times of the year to celebrate certain things. Cancer awareness, Black History Month, all the promenade with, with prom and graduation. There, there's, you know, it, it suggests various things, Veterans Day. So they, they create for you, if you will, some easy to use deployable signage. So for Veterans Day, it might have image of a fallen soldier, shadow, and then they, they say, thank you, veterans. And you can just, you can just push that to the sign. So it allows our, our limited staff, our secretaries who run the signs, they don't have to have technical knowledge to put a nice, a nice feature about veterans or, or about cancer awareness. But it does have colored, some yellows and some reds and, and some blues, mixtures of, of paint for an awareness, for cancer awareness. So there are, it does, it does drift from the, the village's strict ordinance. But the timing of it, so our white lettering, we could go to a very dark gray that's still visible at night that doesn't seem as bright. Or we can put the sign to sleep and just have a total black screen at various times. So if, if you would come up with that, if we could discuss that, that timing, we would, we would put that on a timer and just ensure that it's, it's off at the right, the right moments.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, you know, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners and whether or not they support that or.
All right, Mr. McCarty?
So the signs are already installed?
Yes, sir.
Is it the same size as the old sign or?
No, sir.
How much greater in size is it?
Twenty percent?
Uh, twenty or twenty-five percent?
Somewhere in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, about twenty-five percent larger than than the old.
Mr. Garrigan, does that meet our sign ordinance? Not at all? Okay. Yeah, we've already installed it. That's always nice. Was a photometrics done, a study on how it would affect the residential properties in the north and northwest side of that area with the brightness of the white lettering? Probably not.
The, the school did not conduct any study.
If it's that bright, obviously, the effect could be great on those residents. We haven't done anything to prove our position to know exactly where we're at.
Well, obviously, you have prerogative request a photometric plan, as you all know, we've requested, we've reviewed numerous, numerous EMV signs, I don't believe that a photometric study has ever been requested by this commissioner yourself. I know the United Methodist Church, I, I, correct me, I'll go through in minutes, correct me if I'm wrong. I do not believe you have ever specifically requested.
No, we haven't.
Okay.
This is, this is more new than ever before because of the brightness of it and the effect that it could have on a resident that's right there.
That's why the white, the, the white, I guess, lettering, you know, if we chose to drift from the white lettering to more of a gray, it could still be, it's still a highly visible color to not be white. I mean, if we weren't only specifying white or red, we could get, we could get a, we could tone it down a lot.
Yeah, and the the problem I have is how bright it is presently is to make sure that we're not gonna be affecting somebody so greatly and they come back at us and it's obviously already installed, so we gotta figure something out to make sure it's convenient for them.
But they're saying they can tone it down, but.
I understand, but what, at what level is toned down? We don't know.
Well, we can.
I mean, if the board, if the planning commission believes the photometric plan is appropriate because of unique circumstances in this case, it's obviously the prerogative of the commission to ask for a photometric plan based on the proximity to residents. It doesn't mean the board, planning commission doesn't have that prerogative, they could add, add stipulation to address that. I just wanted to just raise that, something that we've not consistently requested, doesn't mean it's not appropriate in this special circumstance. So obviously, that's the prerogative of the commission.
Okay, presently, I have no more questions.
Ms. Kirstensen?
I, I agree with the concern for the residents, I also feel like we spent a lot of time on this plan and we specifically said civic duty and no pictures, so I would stand pretty firm on that.
Mr. Turner?
So it's a unique situation, it's the high school. The sign itself today, it, does it have the ability to put like, I'm just asking a question here, like if a student were to win state for wrestling, would their picture be on that screen? If you guys have that ability today, is that what you guys are gonna be putting on there?
We have that ability to do it, but that wasn't the intention.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I share the same. Okay. Yeah, I, I, I share the same concern with the fellow commissioners here. Um, I don't love the fact that it's already installed. Um, I, and I think that that being said, this is the high school. I would like to, you know, kind of maybe there's a middle ground here that we could work to. Um, I would be in support of, or I think it's a really good idea with the, the fact that the sign's already there to establish some type of timeframe, you know, like at, and I'm just throwing numbers out like at seven PM, the sign goes off. You know, you have residents north, south, whatever, east, west. Or at this time, it tones down to kind of that like darker, it's not going to impact traffic or flow or whatnot, but I think there needs to be a further study. I think we need to, you know, dive a little bit deeper into it and then kind of set these, you know, parameters, but um, I also want to be cognizant that it is the high school and, you know, we do want, you know, we do want to celebrate certain things. So that's all I have.
Well, I'd like to read a, a letter from one of the residents um who lives across the street from the, from the uh high school. Um, please share my comments and requests below with the PZB regarding the proposed special use and variance for the EMB sign at the high school. My home is at ten ninety Main Street is located directly across from the high school parking lot. Earlier this year, when the high school updated their sign, they were displaying images and graphics all hours of the day and through the night. I have two children whose bedrooms face the high school and they were having trouble sleeping at night because the sign was so bright. I understand and respect that the high school may want to display images and graphics pertaining to events or student achievements. But I ask that the members of the commission strongly consider at least limiting the hours the high school can operate the sign to reduce the impact the brightness will have on my family and neighbors. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you, Rachel Thiel. So, you know, this is, high schools are important in small towns and, you know, um, football games and championships and students that, you know, achieve uh going downstate for mathematics and all those things that, that happen are really important. And so um I agree with you, Mr. Turner, that it's the high school and we, we do need to um consider that. Um, and we also need to consider the Rachel Thieves who live around the high school. So uh while I'm not sure that we need a, a, you know, a photometric you know, plan, I, I do think that we do need to look into it a little more as far as limiting the times, looking at, um, you know, as far as graphics go, I don't know. I, I kind of, I'm kind of thinking both ways, I, you know. I think if the, if the football team wins the state championship, I don't know. I mean, I kind of would love to see a picture of that during the day of the team. I, I don't know if there's some kind of balance here that, that can happen. Um, how do we do that? I'm not sure. I'm kind of throwing it back. I, 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 I don't know. I, I don't know.
I think immediately we can um do a dusk till dawn type of scenario where we're either going fifty percent of the white, dimming it down or even turning it off.
Well, I think for sure it has to be turned off so people can sleep at night. I mean, that's and I don't know how far that goes when Mr. McCarty says north, northwest, there are, there are homes next to strings that are, you know, not I mean, there's, I can think of them right next to strings and, and on the corner of Harden and Victor and uh in Maine. And so they're, they're not just directly, you know, across Main Street, but a little bit farther up. So there are others that, you know, have not spoken up yet. So.
I think, uh, you know, as commissioners and as this board sits too, I mean, we have other signs around and it's also opening a can of worms for us now if we allow the high school to do it. Everybody else who's got, I mean, I know we have one in town who's already doing it outside of. Um.
And it's never stopped.
That's right. And so I just, yeah, um, you know, I'm with Ms. Carstensen that we, we put a lot of time and energy and thought into the ordinance.
It's a tough one.
It is.
The, the other.
Mr. McCarty.
The other problem we have is, is we've gotten more and more into photometrics with all of our parking lots and down lighting, direct lighting down. And this is the first time I've mentioned it, the first time I brought it up because it is becoming more prevalent. And these electronic signs put a lot of ninety-degree direct light out to the area.
Well, it is bright. I've noticed.
We don't know.
I mean, I live right over there.
You don't know the exact effect to the house that's there. And that's the only reason I asked for a photometric reading right there is to see what it's doing and what they do if they tone it down to the fifty percent, how that's going to read. And then if it's within guidelines, what we, that we've asked for, for our lighting, then okay, then it's, 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 it's a better position to be in to defend ourselves, number one. Number two, turning it off at night when someone's absolutely asking for, you know, help so her children can sleep, I agree.
Well, then does it really matter if you turn it off at night? You have to have the photometric.
It, it's, light, light has, has tendencies to affect a lot of things. So.
But if it's turned off at night?
Even during the day, light has tendencies to affect a lot of things. I mean, I, I have personally, I have an eye disease that gets affected by light all the time. So I go by something, if it flashes at me, something that's happening, I get affected by it. It is what it is, but.
Okay, well, I didn't know that.
Something that uh we have to think about and be cognizant of, you know, the public for.
Okay, so what do we want to do?
I, I have a, a recommendation. Um, I think that Mr. Garen, do you, Mr. Gergen, do you think it would be a good idea here? We're kind of stuck, right? So it's like, we're just gonna, we're gonna start throwing out times and maybe you should do this. Why don't we do the photometric?
Correct.
Come up with and then work with the high.
Work with the high school with an actual specific plan.
We can tone it down to X between four and seven, and then we go off at seven, come back to us with those numbers and then we can vote on something.
No, I concur. I was going to, I think that's an excellent idea.
Also, limiting what uh events we're going to use the graphics for. I, I'm going to be honest, I don't want to see the graphics all the time. And but for graduation or for some other very important thing like that where we're celebrating.
So, so I understand this clarification for our next meeting, we're going to address photometric plan. We're going to address specific, there's concerns about time, the time, specific time duration of proposed EMB sign. And there's concerns obviously about the content, i.e. specifically the actual content and when can that content be displayed?
And when they can, when can they use graphics? And I think if, if it's for certain celebrations of accomplishments for the high school, that's an explanation we can give to others that may want to have graphics on their signs and say, well, wait a minute, this is the high school and this is why they are allowed.
So I, I think that makes sense. So what I can do at the prerogative, at the discretion of the, um, of, of the planning commission, they support continuing this case. I will work with the high school's technology department on a very specific um a plan with which very, which detailed and we can come, bring that plan back to the next high, next planning commission meeting and review that and see if there's support for that plan. And maybe there should be modifications of that plan at the next meeting.
I have one more, I have one more question though. The other EMB signs that we have like at the Methodist Church and the library, are they on all night or are they on, they go off at night? What do we have?
I believe they're on all night. I believe there's, I think the United Methodist Church is on, typically we have provision in our sign ordinance that says for a typical commercial business, it's supposed to be, be turned off at the end of business hours.
Okay.
But I think, and I, I may be incorrect, but I believe the
I have no idea.
Methodist church, the Methodist church is on all night.
Okay.
But they're also operating within the ordinance.
They are.
Lettering.
They are.
Putting up graphics.
They are.
Yeah, so I, I, and I, so I see a difference between lettering being on and graphics.
Right.
So I see as two different issues and, and again, I see it as for activities that are, that are connected with the school. I know I look like veterans and cancer, all those things are all good, things like that. But once you get into one of those items, it's like, well, that's my favorite and that's my favorite and that's my favorite. You could come up with enough that you'd almost be graphics all the time. So I think it should be graphics limited to those activities at the school, graduation, football game, something.
Yeah, but this is what we got into last time. We can't limit the church. So if they come here and ask, we can't say that. So that's my concern, right? If we allow the schools to do this, you're allowing everybody to do this.
You have to have specific language. That's why we have.
Yeah.
That's why we have Mr.
Are we thinking one month or two months with the feedback that Mike, we think in one month or two months?
I'm concerned about the photometric plan study. I think two months may be appropriate because study based on this may take at least a month. I mean,
And we're going to lose time between the twenty-fifth and the.
Holidays.
Yeah.
I, I honestly, I, I'm a little concerned. I'm not saying it's not completely appropriate according to Mr. McCarty. It's, you know, that's a, that's a valid point. Uh, I just, I'm, I have some concerns of whether they could during the holidays, they can complete it and have everything ready for the next meeting. But I'll allow the applicant to speak. They may have.
Okay. Time may be. I, I, I need to say one other thing before we go any farther and that is that between now and two months from now, we need to have the sign turned off at night for the residents that need to sleep. So how do we do that?
Eight o'clock.
Do we need to have, do we need?
I'm sure that the high school, I'm sure that the high school, because we're ruling on this motion today, is going to voluntarily agree to a time that would be reasonable for them to shut down at this point in time. We talked dusk till dawn. The problem was that we live in Chicago and dusk is now four thirty-seven in the afternoon.
Right. So, so do we, can we do that?
Of course.
Okay, so what would be a reasonable time to turn that sign off?
Seven.
Seven o'clock, eight o'clock?
Six, seven, whatever, whatever you'd like.
Seven o'clock.
Seven is good.
That's reasonable. Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're uh just to provide just a further, further comment, we, we're fully behind whatever you would support. There's no rush to this. We, we're not on a timeline. Uh, it's more about celebrating kids and celebrating nice things uh just in a, a slightly more um uh fun way. And, and when we can do that, when you allow us to, we'll, we'll greatly do it. If we can't, then we won't. So thank you very much for, for your consideration and flexibility.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we're going to need a motion.
And we're continuing to what meeting?
First February.
Mike, do you know what? The seventh? Yes, it'll be the seventh. It'll be February the seventh.
Okay, so I will, um, I will make a motion to um continue, um, and this would be for both PZB twenty-three dash twenty and oh, it's all under that same one, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the consideration of special.
Is it twenty-one?
That, that.
That's twenty-one.
Yeah.
No, PZB twenty-three twenty?
Right, only twenty.
Right. Consideration of a special use for an electronic message board to be located at the property commonly known as the Antioch Community High School located at eleven thirty-three Main Street, pin zero-two dash one seven dash two hundred dash zero zero two to continue to the February seventh meeting.
I'm just wondering what time you'd like it to come back on. Um, if we go out at night, seven PM, is a, is a seven AM or a six AM?
Man, can we get through the motion first?
I'll, second.
Okay.
Second, okay, roll call. Roll call.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Filippo? Yes. Cardi?
Yes.
Carstensen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes. Motion carried.
Yes, I'd just like to know from the group what, what you would.
Seven AM.
Feel good.
What time does the school start in session?
Uh, school, school starts at eight oh five.
Eight oh five, what time do the school buses start showing?
Yeah, they start showing about seven twenty.
At seven AM, okay.
I think seven o'clock.
So seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
Okay.
I wait all the students coming in, we'll see whatever's on the sign then.
Sure.
Thank you. Seven, seven to seven. Okay, now we go to PZB twenty-three dash twenty-one. Consideration of a special use for an electronic message board to be located at the property commonly known as Petty Elementary School located eight fifty Highview Drive in Antioch. Pin number two oh, zero-two dash zero-seven dash three hundred dash zero zero one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. That the record reflects this is a public hearing being heard pursuant to public notice in accordance with all states, the actions of applicable local ordinances. Madam Chairperson, this matter comes before you this evening for the Petty Elementary School located eight five Highview applicant is requesting a variance uh for a EMB sign. Um, currently there is a message board at the actual petty school, right at the main entrance there. The applicant has requested a EMB sign. Uh, as you well know, um, refresh your memory, all EMB signs do require special use. Based on that fact, the applicant, applicant is coming before you this evening for a special use. Uh, it's proposing a new uh EMB sign at the entrance um of this proposed high uh elementary school. Again, in accordance with the village ordinance, it's also imperative important to look at the context of the property. Unlike the high school, this property uh is located within a, basically a campus, uh that really the property is adjacent to this area. But there is a residential area. It's in north, northwest Tiffany Farms. Um, but generally the area around this property is located within academic uh campus. There are two schools within this area. So uh generally this area to the south would be part of the campus, the area to the west, there, there's area open space. The area to the north, there's parking, you know, area to the east uh is parking. I can show you, um, if you want to see the context map, I'll be more happy to show you, to show you. But if you're familiar with the campus, if anything, certainly this proposed EMB sign would not be visible uh from, most importantly, the residences or that subdivision located to the northwest of this proposed campus. So it's also important to look at context. What is the surrounding area? As we, we well know, what's important for special uses is to make sure they don't have any negative impacts on the adjacent properties. They wouldn't have any negative impact on the property values. Those are the factors. That's what we also look at. What are the surrounding uses? So in this case, I've outlined what the context of the property is. Uh, going through the first two findings of facts, first finding, as we well know, special use would not be injurious to use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate area. Um, the purposes already permitted nor substantially um diminished property values. Again, the existing WC Petty Elementary School uh is, as I've already outlined, is located uh in a, a campus, academic campus. There's parking again to the east of this area, the actual proposed sign uh as, as you can see in your, the staff report, it's simply to replace an existing message board. There's an old message board where they had to actually add lettering. Um, I don't know when that was uh actually installed, but it reflects the, the technology that clearly is not contemporary. The applicant is simply requesting to replace that sign with a EMB, uh, EMB sign. Um, the location of this will be in the front drop-off area. There's exactly a drop-off area in front of the actual school itself. They just simply want to replace the existing message board with a new EMB sign. The applicant, again, is not asking for a variance. They're not asking for relief. They would basically comply with the language of our, our ordinance, i.e. will be strict lettering. Um, graphics would be prohibited. They would just simply have either white or red lettering on a black background. They're just simply updating their message board. Um, that again, I've already outlined, this proposed uh EMB sign would be adjacent to drop-off area, be, would be visible from people entering into the school campus itself. It would be visible from the parking located uh between the two schools there, but it would not be visible either from Route one seventy-three, would not be visible more, most importantly for the residential area to the north or uh any apartments, as you know, several apartments on Highview. It would not be visible to those apartment or to those residents. So this case is quite different than the high school case we just reviewed. The second finding of fact for a special use is establishment of a special use not being impede the normal and orderly development uh improvement of adjacent properties for uses permitted in such a zoning district. Again, because this is a self-contained academic campus, two schools, um, this proposed message board, EMB sign, we do not believe would have any a negative impact. It would clearly be consistent with the trend of development or development patterns, which is generally, again, this is civic, uh, i.e. academic uses. We have two schools here. Uh, it just simply will improve communications uh for the school, improve more communications, uh, update the tech, technology through reflect current EMB standards uh and the fact that they're not asking for a variance or any relief. Staff is generally comfortable and we believe that applicant has met sec, second finding of fact. So respectfully, uh, Madam Chairperson, we would submit that the applicant has complied with the two required findings of facts uh for a special use and we are making a favorable recommendation this evening uh for the EMB sign at the WC Petty School. And with that, I will be more than happy to um, um, be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. We did incorporate two stipulations, obviously the village engineer review. I don't believe there will be any extensive engineering in our standard engineer, we regards Antioch Fire Protection District. Don't believe there's any sightline issues here. It will be installed on the existing wall adjacent to the. Don't believe there's any sightline issues here. It will be installed on the existing wall adjacent to the entrance. If you, if you know where that existing message board is right now, I'm sorry, the message, um, board, this proposed sign would simply replace that. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
Um, again, I'm just not familiar. Like if you're saying this, this message board is mounted on a wall, it's not like in a monument then?
This is not a monument sign.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, if, there's a existing, um, message board right now in the drop-off area.
Okay. How's this difference? And if you put a like a, a, a big screen TV up there on that wall?
Well, the applicant is not asking for a variance. If they were asking for a variance, in order to say theoretically, they could ask for a variance and have graphics and they could highlight their band and.
Yeah, but what would be the difference between this, the sign that they're putting up in if they just went out there and put a TV mounted on the outside of the building?
Um, well, again, the only, I mean theoretically, a current technology, the NBC, NBC, they could do that. They could show video, but they would need a variance. Consistent with the previous case we just discussed.
Okay.
To do that, they would need a variance and there's nothing which would prohibit them from coming to a variance somewhere in the future, but we would have, probably have the same discussion that we just had.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out what the difference, you know, when we talk about EMBs, we talk about messaging boards, we talk about, you know, it's usually out on a monument away from the building and stuff like that. This is something that's attached to the building.
Right.
Itself like that. I'm just curious to say, you know, I, we're drawing a fine line here. Is, is this an electronic messaging board or is this just, you know, somebody stuck? Basically, I guess I'm saying is somebody put a, they put a, a big screen TV and, and hung it on the outside of the building. Would that have to come back? Would that be something that would have to come back to us to, to tell them, no, you can't put a TV, mount a TV on the outside of your build, on the wall of your building?
Well, I would consider, yeah, I, I mean, I consider that, I, I said what they're proposing is EMB sign clearly. I mean, if somebody put a large, uh, flat screen TV. Um, I think there is still a basis to basically require them to come in for approval of that, especially if it has, yeah, I, I do think there's a process. But we'll have to, uh, we'll have to address that when that.
I'll just.
I mean, EMB signs with my understanding, current technology, you can show video.
Yeah.
So in a way, in many ways, it's a variation of a TV.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just, want to draw the line distinction here, make sure that we're, you know, when we're saying electronic messaging board, that we're truly addressing a tri messaging board and we're not getting confused with something else. That's all.
No, this, this is clearly an EMB sign.
Okay. Okay, so, so this would have the capability of doing graphics that they've committed, saying is we're not going to do any graphics on it?
The applicant's actually here, I believe, but that's my understanding. They're, um, they're actually, they're, they've made a commitment not to vary from that.
Okay, if you would please raise your hand to be sworn in and state your name.
Quoktemo Mendez.
Do you sound, I swear that the testimony you give in this hearing is factual to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, so can you introduce yourself? I have no idea who.
My name is Quoktemo Mendez. I'm the, uh, facilities manager for operations at the District Thirty-four, K three eight.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So would this have graphic capabilities that you're not just not going to use or if this doesn't, what you per, or what you want to install doesn't have graphic?
All LED signboards or EMBs, what you're referring to, have graphic capabilities. Um, we're simply, um, want to update our sign from what we have right now because it's a, it's an issue, it's a safety issue for our staff to go up and update it.
Yep.
Uh, we currently can't communicate with our, our neighbors, um, because of the limitations to go and update the sign.
Okay.
Um, as far as I'm concerned, um, I have not been asked for any graphics at, um, I believe you're.
Okay.
Like movable graphics.
Yeah.
Um, there will be pictures like, uh, caricature pictures, for example, um, I believe some whoever created this picture on the, uh, on the sign, it's, I believe, picture of a heart and a flower.
Okay.
Um, there would be pictures like that, colorful pictures, um, and then just simply lettering. Uh, we, at, at, at a K three eight level, we don't, um, as far as I know, we don't allow pictures of students, so we would be a little bit different than high school.
Yeah.
Um, I'm a little sympathetic to the high school because I come from two high school districts.
Yeah.
So we do, I, I understand where that gentleman's coming from.
Yeah.
And, um, but we don't, um, like I said, through K through eight, we, policy is not to allow pictures of students.
Okay, but you would have, like the graphic shows here, you would have this type of graphic up there on your screen or?
It would be a, a standstill graphic from what I'm being told, like for example, we would have our, our mascot, the bobcat.
Yeah.
Would be on there.
Okay.
Um, this, that's graphics.
Okay.
We're looking at.
Okay, so you will have some, some graphics on it.
Not moving.
Not.
Not moving, but yeah, but a picture in the background or?
Cartoonish graphics, yes.
I think that's appropriate for kids. I think that's fine, bro.
Yeah, and to just, uh, um, you know, a little bit of information, this is, uh, completely funded through the boosters.
Okay.
Love, um, the school district, um, has not, uh, contributed any money to it. It's all to the community.
That's nice.
The community raised all the money.
Okay, nice. Okay. I don't have anything more.
Ms. San Filippo?
Um, and so it's going to go where the?
Where the existence.
Yeah, so I'm very familiar. Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Mr. McCarty?
Um, I, I don't have any questions.
Ms. Carstensen?
I, I don't have questions, but again, I, you know, we're, we're talking about graphics, right? And this is gonna open this up to everyone else we've allowed to have these signs. So it's important to me, since we invested all that time, that we consider this and think about the impacts and repercussions that could come from allowing all of the schools to have this.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I think, uh, I'm, I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. The, the way that the driveline is there, like it's on the side of the wall because that's how you drive into the building. I drop my kids off there every day and I think the old sign was there when I was there. So I think, you know, it definitely needs to be updated. I understand where Mrs., Mrs. Carstensen keeps saying though, like there is kind of this, it's hard, like where, where, where do we draw the line on this? And are we going to continue to be, is every single sign in town now that a customer coming back to ask for graphics, movable things? Um, if there's the ability to draw the line in the sand and say, these are, these are schools, we're not selling, we're not promoting business, we are just simply celebrating our, you know, children. I don't know, but, um, I have no problem with this scenario with this sign.
I do think there's a difference.
There's a digital board on the Ouse Building. Are they using any kind of graphics on that?
They use rolling, uh, graphics for lettering and they, that one is an older, um, sign, so it doesn't have the newer technology.
Okay.
So they, they don't have that capability.
They could. I do think there's a difference between civic and business. Um, so with that, um, is there, Mr. McCarty?
So in, 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 in one instance, we're sitting here saying that staff is recommending this because they're not going to have any graphics, but then we're already come to the conclusion that they're going to have graphics, just not moving graphics. Correct?
If, pictures, caricature pictures.
Caricature pictures and graphics. However, we cut the pie up. It's coming up with graphics. So, um, Mr. Garrigan, if we're going to be going down this road and we're going to say that civics institution, schools or something like that are going to have that availability for standalone graphics, then it should be in the ordinance so that we're not sitting here constantly doing, um, a rewrite to everything we're doing.
Good point.
And then, um, as Garrigan, uh, stated, our sign is completely inclusive into our campus. No light, uh, will affect any property, any surrounding properties. It's all contained.
I still, I was still would like you to, if, if we could have you limit, limit your timeframe of the use of the sign so that it shuts off at a certain time at night.
It's not going to be lit, I don't think, is it? Is it lit?
Well, it's.
Well, if it has.
It's an LED.
Oh, no, no, no. Right, but I mean, it's not going to be like rolling or anything.
No, it's not a matter of rolling.
No, but if they have like a picture, it'll be back.
I mean.
Yeah.
Like they're showing here in the example, it would be let up.
I understand, but it's not going to be a rolling.
Consistent with the applicant, if the plan commission will allow, I think it may be appropriate to get more detail on the specific graphics and bring this for a continuous matter. And so we're consistent, um, and define exactly what graphics and some definitively to that if the applicant, I mean, we're being flexible to allow this to proceed as a special use, not request a variance. So I think staff is, I think plan commission and staff's being flexible, but to work with the school district on more specificity. Addressing, I think there's a legitimate concern because clearly the board made it quite clear, uh, at least in the previous commercial EMB signs, they were, they had a pretty strict interpretation. So this would be a very.
Just so for the record, we were very.
That's correct.
Civic as well.
Yes, yes, the plan commission was too. And that, that, that or, ordinance modifications, which we spent a lot of time discussing, that did not happen in a vacuum. There was a lot, it was a very healthy discussion. Um, and that language reflects, I think, a consensus. Well, maybe I shouldn't say that. I don't know if it's complete consensus, but it was passed and approved.
Agreed. And then, um, as things come up, gray areas come up and things change. And I think we do, do need to look at, relook at this. And maybe we need to look at the ordinance again and look at the language, and we may need to revisit that, as Mr. McCarty talked about.
I think that's the only way to, to come to a general drawn into the ordinance idea of what's allowed and what isn't. And then we're not sitting here making things up as we're going.
I agree.
In the future.
So I think we need to continue it then. Why don't we continue it to the February seventh as well?
I'll make a motion to do so.
So can I ask a question, Michael? I mean,
Let's, let's finish the motion.
Oh, okay, well, it had, it has, it's, could, could we? If they want it, if they want to put the sign up and use it accord, without the graphic for now?
I appreciate the fact that they are coming before us before putting the sign up.
Mm-hmm.
Period.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that right there says it all. And, and, and thank you. You know, I appreciate that. Number one, go ahead.
What? Proceeding, everybody, we have, sorry.
I, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's all stop for a moment. Sir, would you come back to the podium? Mr. McCarty, what would you like to ask this gentleman?
I, I just made my statement.
Oh, I thought you had asked him to come back up to the podium.
I asked, I asked previously if we could do what we were doing for the high school, and that's why we're extending this to February and waiting for us to dial it in and get it.
Okay, okay. And Ms. San Filippo, you asked about them putting it up now?
I mean, has it been purchased?
Yeah.
So you have, you have a sign?
Yes.
So right now, could they? Could we make a motion for them to put the sign up and operate it within our ordinance? And then without the graphic?
You can, you can make a motion for that.
Without the graphic, then if you go back to the district and they want.
There's a first on the table.
We have, we, yeah. Uh, Commissioner, it's a good point, but we do have a motion on the table to table this. And it's a good point, Commissioner, we do have a motion on the table. Um, to table this with the directions as provided during debate until February the seventh, um, consistent with the other application. If there is no second to this, then the motion will not be perfected and won't go forward. If there is a second, a motion to table is not debatable under Robert's rules. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page procedural.
So do we have a second for that motion?
Let me ask a quick question.
There is always ability to clarify motions under Robert's rule. So yes, you can.
Okay, so if we don't second right now, we can have further discussion about what Ms. San Filippo just stated.
For lack of a better word, motion dies and yes, you can't have.
But you can also second it and have discussion after.
No, you cannot.
No.
Okay, if the motion to table, motion to tables are not debatable under Robert's.
Thank you.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ryan?
No.
San Filippo?
No.
McCarty?
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Uh, Turner?
No.
Henny?
No. Okay, so the motion dies. Now.
I'm just thinking about the district. They have the sign in their possession and we have the winter months coming up. And so, you know, that's why I mentioned it.
Go make a motion.
So I would like to make a motion, um, consideration of the special use, PZB twenty-three dash twenty-one for an electronic message board to be located at the property commonly known as the Petty Elementary School located at eight fifty Highview Drive. Pin zero-two dash zero-seven dash three hundred dash zero-zero-one. Um, but to operate within the current ordinance without the graphic for now.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ryan?
Yes.
San Filippo?
Yes.
McCarty?
No.
Kirsten?
No.
Turner?
Yes.
Henny?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's a separate issue now.
So if they want to use the graphic, they could come back for the variance.
Correct.
Yes, right.
Madam Chairperson. So does, uh, which district is this? I apologize.
Thirty, thirty-four.
Does District Thirty-four know the parameters of what they can do? Or can we just make sure whether it doesn't need to be now? We're here for planning and zoning, that's it. But I just want to make sure that there's a conversation. I hope the board's okay with this. That District Thirty-four knows, knows what they can do and can't do under, when this gets approved before the board, because the board may not approve it, but I want to know or that, I want to make sure that District Thirty-four knows when they walk out of here today, what happened tonight.
I believe I understand what you guys, what the board here is looking for. And if there's any, any issues moving forward, I will directly work with the village to address any issues, but as it's, it, so I am clear. And, uh, we will keep it to strictly lettering is what I believe, what you're looking for.
The language and the ordinance for the EMB sign.
And I will work with Mr. Garrigan to make sure that we follow what we agree to.
Yeah.
Mr. McCarty, what did you?
You can't install a sign until it gets approved by the board, correct?
Just like I said.
Okay.
Yeah, I said that, I said that.
Work with Michael.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Breathe.
When, when Thirty-four walks out, every applicant needs to know when they walk out, what happened there tonight, what the recommendation was. I think that's the only reason. Well, the people have taken the time to apply before the, so agreed? We helpful with that?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then we move on to PZB twenty-three dash twenty-three, consideration of a final plan of subdivision for Clubland's Phase Four.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. This matter comes before you this evening, uh, for a reapproval of final plat for Phase Four. As you recall, um, the applicant's coming before you this evening for a final plat for Phase Four. As we recall, back in February two thousand and seven, on the actual final plat was approved, uh, for this phase of the Clublands. Um, unfortunately, that final plat was never recorded because of the developer. Um, and because of that inadvertent, um, uh, fact that, that we, um, final plat was not recorded, the applicant needs is, is required based on the ordinance to come back for reapproval of the final plat. As you recall, the, um, Clubland's development was a master plan development, developed, approved by the board prior to two thousand and seven. The applicant on, uh, that is, who's actually here this evening is now requesting the opportunity to proceed with the development of Phase Four. Uh, in your context map, there's a context map showing Phase Four, which is generally, uh, adjacent to Savage Road and north of Miller. On that area currently is undeveloped. The applicant is requesting the opportunity to proceed with development sometime in two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, actually construction of approximately, um, three hundred plus homes, um, uh, of this proposed phase itself. And the applicant, uh, is required to actually proceed with the final plat. In accordance with village ordinance, if the final plat is consistent, uh, with the preliminary plat, the village is required to approve it. Uh, again, I, as I stated, the actual final plat was approved as being consistent, uh, with the preliminary plat by the previous village board back in two thousand and seven. Um, but because it was not recorded, there has to be a re, reapproval process. Now, obviously there's extensive engineering. Um, we, I've asked the village engineer, Mr. Hartnett, they actually behaved it this evening. If there's any engineering questions, there's been, um, um, basically a, a, a general review, complete, but generally a pretty comprehensive review of the engineering, and I'm going to allow our village engineer, if there's any specific engineering questions as it relates to this phase. But the applicant is currently working with a, a large, um, a production builder who has expressed interest in constructing approximately three hundred and forty-seven new homes next year, potentially, as I've already outlined. Currently this property is vacant, um, so obviously the infrastructure, i.e. the utilities, water, sanitary, storm sewer, the roadways, all the, uh, required utilities have not been installed. But prior to do that, they need to get approved the final plat. So that's the first step for, on this new development. So this, again, is the, uh, most recent last phase of the Clubland's development. The applicant's actually here this evening to answer any questions. Mr. Hartnett is actually here this evening to answer any engineering questions. I believe the final engineering plans were also submitted to you. You have a final plat that's before you. Um, but again, what's before the, before the plant commission this evening uh is again, whether the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat. Which again was approved by the village board back in two thousand and seven. Um, so with that, uh, we are seeking approval this evening. Of um, the final plat for Phase Four of the Clublands, subject to our two standard. Um, stipulations, obviously review, village engineer and Antioch fire protection review. Obviously, before the applicant can proceed with any type of um, development, site development, all the final engineering. Has to be approved by the village. As I've already highlighted, HR Green's been working very closely with Manhard. On working through many of the, many of the issues and um, they're very close to getting final engineering approval. I don't think I misspoke. But I know there's still, still maybe a few issues out there, but uh, we're making real progress in getting the final engineering approved. Uh, by um, by our uh professional engineering staff. So with that, I'll conclude my staff reports. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. As I've said. A representative from Moda Homes is actually here this evening along with their engineering from Manhard. Um, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Um, Mr. Ryan.
Yes. Do you go a little bit more detail about, you said this is approved but not reported. What is that? What do you, what are you really, what are you really saying there? That back in two thousand and seven, the, I mean.
Unfortunately, the previous developer, as you all know.
Yeah.
Left a lot of loose ends.
Well, I mean, I don't know about this, like I said.
Yes, yes, the previous developer. Yes, the previous developer left numerous, numerous loose ends that the village actually spent many, many years trying to rectify. And obviously, we have a very successful development now.
Yeah.
The Clublands, we've had, as you know, we've had three, um, I'm sorry, two different production builders in there. It's been in many ways a very, very successful development. We see a lot of tremendous activity, a lot of interest in the Clublands. So in many ways, it's a, it's a, it's a big success story. Um, I mean, it really is.
It's a nice, it's a nice topic.
And um, but unfortunately, the original developer left some loose ends. I'm being polite. Um, and one of the loose ends was not recording the final plat.
Ordered with.
Lake County Recorder's Office. So before you can develop any property.
Yeah.
You have to obviously go through all the entitlements, the annexations, the PUD, but most importantly, it has to be platted, the preliminary and final plat.
Yeah.
That plat has to be recorded before you can start selling lots and moving dirt. In other words, you're developing the property. Um, that plat was not recorded. Um, and I was, this is prior to when I started, way, well before when I started. So I, but they obviously did not record the plat. That's why this is coming before you this evening. For reapproval of final class. We're being, you know, that's why.
We have to approve it before they can report it.
Correct. It has to get approved by the village board. And at that point, the applicant, you know, will be able to record it. After, you know, subject to submitting all the required surety bonds and all of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no more questions.
Ms. San Filippo?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Mr. McCarty?
I think there's only three people in this entire room who are here at that timeframe. Lori, me and Mr. Green. Oh, yeah, you were here too, yeah. Um, all right, uh, has anything changed from the preliminary plat to where we're at today with final plat? So same amount of homes? Same amount of uh, uh, the outlets?
Yes, sir. The outlets, uh, I'm Tim Hartnett from HR Green, your village engineering consultant since oh one. Um, number of lots?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
You sound, we sort of testimony have given this hearing especially to the best of your knowledge.
I do. Um, number of lots has not changed. Um, configuration, the outlets has remained. The tot lots have been renamed, the references to HOA, all that good stuff. The, the change that's been made is the developer's name from Newman Homes to Moda. Um, they've cleaned up a few things. Again, title blocks, dates that the plans were completed, they've all been freshened up. We confirmed at Lake County SMC, the Army Corps of Engineers, the DNR, and all the permits, EPA permits have been updated. Are, and are in hand. We had a meeting with Kurt Wilford at Lake County SMC. Got his concurrence that everything is good to go and still the same. And um, so as Mr. Garrigan stated, we are in the final stages. It's just very minor. Um, technical, just clarifications. But uh, from an engineering standpoint and a final plat standpoint, HR Green will be ready to recommend. Um, issuing a. Construct, once it goes to plant commission and then.
Okay, um, the outlet that was uh signified and set aside for their community center? Previously, is that in a different phase or is that in this phase? That's in Phase Three? Sure.
Uh, my name's Troy Murts. I'm the owner developer of the public subdivision. I've owned it since two thousand and fourteen.
Can I?
Sorry.
You sound, we sort of testimony have given this hearing especially to the best of your knowledge.
I do. Um, it is a great question. The um, and I think Tim was kind of hung up on, wait, was there supposed to be a clubhouse over there? No, uh, Phase Three, there is a clubhouse site. It's being constructed right now.
Okay.
On the original planned area. So this is uh, everything that was supposed to happen in Phase Four is still there. It's on the plans, consistent with what happened back in oh seven.
From what I remember, in oh seven, we made sure that that was going to happen between Phase Two and Phase Three. Or Phase Three and Phase Four. I can't remember exactly. Um, so just as long as I know that it's under construction and being, you know, completed, do we have a completion date for that?
Uh, we're targeting like March. Uh, there's a swimming pool that'll be built over the summer. But I think that the, the building itself, structure would probably have an occupancy certificate sometime around March.
Okay, all right. Just one of the things I wanted to make sure that we follow up on from that timeframe and what I remember, which is very little. Um, all right, so we're consistent with everything with SMC, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, because there's so much sense, sensitive land around this entire thing. Um, are we going to be doing our own inspections on site for uh, uh. Uh, sill fencing, so on and so forth?
Yes, sir. We'll have a decky. They provide the decky, dedicated erosion control inspector.
Thank you.
Uh, HR Green provides the uh, third-party observation on behalf of the village in conjunction with Dennis Heimbro. Your director of public works as well as your water and sewer staff comes out at, at key time. Um, and that's reimbursed by the developer through an escrow account. But we're out there to make sure it gets built in conformance with the approved plans and specs. And then uh, at the end, we make recommendation after receiving the record drawings and all of the information. That it would be appropriate to accept that phase, just like we've done in the past.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. All right. I have no further questions.
Ms. Carsonson?
No.
Mr. Turner?
No questions.
I have a couple of questions. Um, when I looked, when I was looking them over, my, my husband, who's retired. He was Wally Henning, who was the inspector who inspected most of your uh, last phases. And he, he brought up a good point about some of the names on these streets. That when they go around for um, uh, mutual aid and emergencies, it's, it's named one. You know, there's one street named um, like Homer Drive. And when you go around the, the curve, then it's South Shore Cove. And he said, what about with, with um, mutual aid? Or why, why do the street names change? Maybe they shouldn't, or can you do something about that? He was, he was concerned about that.
That's why we look, that's why we work with the fire protection district and confirm that they don't have any issues like that.
Okay, yeah. He, he was like, I don't know, Cheryl, this looks a little. Uh, because then there was Green Garden Lane, and then when you run, run around, it was Green Grove Lane and.
We absolutely, that's one of the conditions with our final engineering approval. We will confirm that there's no confusion caused so that nobody has an issue when and if they need services.
Okay.
Um, but we also check addresses, we all, or I should say post office, fire district and emergency services. I'll check in for that to make sure.
Okay.
That we don't duplicate names to cause confusion, courts, lanes. We try to avoid certain.
Yeah, because it just goes around and then, and then um, spacing of the trees. And he said, talked about um, away from the streetlights and the stop signs when you're putting them in. He said, you know, when you're planting them, it looks fine, but then give it a, a year or two and now. The, with the way the trees and the stop signs are, all of a sudden, you know, they're blocking things. So.
Yeah, we, uh, that was one of our, we had a uh, teams meeting with the developer, their design team, our team and the village staff. And uh, they agreed to amend the light spacing.
Okay.
From way back in the day in oh six and.
Yeah.
Seven. They also agreed to move the uh landscaping uh away from the site triangles at the intersections and signage. And also below the streetlights.
Okay, good to know.
A lot of good lessons learned.
He'll, he'll be happy to hear that.
So yes, uh, that comment has been addressed and their plans have been changed.
Great. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
I had one other question.
Yes.
What, what is the light spacing? I was desperately trying to find it on, with the little symbols.
So back in the day, back in the day, the village used to require lights every hundred and fifty feet. And it was a lot. It also became very expensive for the village to own and maintain those lights. So then between Phase Two and Three, I believe, the, the, we amended the spacing to. Uh, which is consistent with your ordinance uh at intersections, at the end of cul-de-sacs. And at um, a certain spacing, especially on a curve. And so the.
You know what the work is, Michael? I'm sorry, I don't, I mean, with the spacing.
Yeah, the, the, it is at intersections.
I just know personally, like in my neighborhood, we don't have enough lighting. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there will be.
There is enough lighting.
Compliance, I believe, right, with our ordinance or the spacing of the lighting. Okay.
And the other uh, lighting requirement is an architectural lighting requirement on these buildings. That they have the coach lights and those types of lights, so.
Okay, thank you.
Again, uh, from a municipality standpoint, when these lights are owned and operated by the village and or comm ed. It's a, a substantial bill uh month over month. And so they pared it back. From an affordability standpoint back in oh six, oh seven.
Hey, I had one more.
Yes, Mr. Turner?
Um, so it just sparked my memory there. So just um, making sure as well, so this was done back in two thousand and seven, correct? Um, has the, has the, the road drainage, everything like that been brought up to uh, current standards as well?
They do match our uh, Village of Antioch details, yes, sir.
Okay.
And they're consistent with Phase Three, which was completed a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Then I have one more question for the developer. Will there be an SA, SSA attached to the properties?
There is an SSA. Uh, it's taxed at uh, the rate of um. Four hundred and four dollars uh per home in that part of the community.
Okay.
And, and that.
Per year.
That expires.
Not soon enough.
This will be a new one.
I know, because I.
But this will be, this will be new, this.
No new ta, no, there's no new tax. It, it's already levied on the property.
Oh, it is.
And I'm already paying that tax every single year.
But this will go on to the new, so these new homes will have an SSA.
Yes.
Four hundred and five dollars per year?
Correct.
For how long?
Uh, I, I'm going to say it's got about twelve years left.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve PZB two-three dash two-three.
Hold on.
For final plat.
We had one more.
Oh.
Comment, Mr. Green?
For impact fees? For impact fees? Right. Sure.
So it's two per household.
Sure.
Ms. Mr. Green, if you could.
Period.
Oh, yes.
Um, and, and then, oh, one, that, that sparks another thing is impact fees. All the impact fees from previous are associated to this.
As you, or maybe don't, but uh, the impact fees have all were incorporated in the annexation PUD. So basically, that's all consistent.
And then those figures from that timeframe.
Correct. Exactly. That's, I mean, it's all, it's all basically entitled and.
Right.
That's.
Got it. Okay, uh, again, I'll uh. Make a motion to approve PZB two-three dash two-three consideration for final plat of subdivision for Clublands Phase Four.
I'll second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay, roll call.
Ryan?
Yes.
San Filippo?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Kirstensen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. It's that. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, I have a, I have another item I want to ask.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Well, this thing is very complex in correspondence, but. We got a lawsuit. We were all named in it.
Mr. Ryan, we, we, we're not going to discuss that, right?
When does that, when, okay.
We, we will.
Does that get discussed?
We will, we will talk about that.
When?
Ms. Ryan, you want to talk to me about it?
Not in a, not in a public, not in a public meeting. We, we will talk about that.
Okay, is that not a public document?
Mr. Ryan, if we talk about that, we inherently would talk about litigation strategy. It would compromise our ability to defend the lawsuit properly. So if we, if you want to stick around, I could stick around and talk to you about it. Be more than happy to.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I.
Yeah, you're a roll call.
Yeah, you, you gotta, yeah.